On meeting order for the May nineteenth, twenty twenty five, uh, Harlan Township Board of Zoning Appeals. At seven thirty two. And we'll roll call please.
Kyle Ferris.
Here.
Steve Eisenbrow.
Yeah.
Keith Campbell.
Here.
Bill Gallagher.
Here.
Amy Richardson.
Here.
Chris Peroni is not here and Jim Steel Smith.
Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have motion to approve the agenda with flexibility.
I made a motion to approve it.
My second.
All favor.
Aye.
We have a motion to table the minutes till after, uh, the end of the meeting.
I'll make a motion table minutes.
I'll second.
All favor.
Aye.
I have seven. And, uh, let's see. Okay, puts us into, um, our first hearing scheduled for seven thirty five is HT BZA twenty five dash oh two, Westville Estates Mobile Home Park. When we need a motion going to that hearing?
I'll make a motion, open hearing HT BZA twenty five dash oh two for Westville Estates Mobile Home Parks.
I'll second it.
And do we need a roll call for that?
Anything on the hearing would.
All favor.
Aye.
You guys have it? So we're gonna go to that hearing.
You need to read the procedures. Well, this, the procedure is here. Means like to square people in.
Okay.
Normally, that's okay.
So I'm gonna read off the, uh, the procedures for the hearing, um. We may have a staff report by the zoning inspector, item B would be application to representative. Item C, we would go into adjoining parties, uh, excuse me, adjoining property owners. D would be open for public comment. E, all comments must be relevant to the issue before the board. F, all may be cross-examined on their statements. G, all questions of presenters and cross-examinations will be directed through the chair. H, all persons will, uh, speaking will stand at the podium. And all person speaking will state their name and address for the record. And all person speaking will give in testimony will be sworn in. At this time, do we have anybody that would like to give testimony on this hearing?
Need the applicant and his own inspector at least.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This, 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 he's sworn in, that's all.
You say we need Mike too?
Yeah, Mike, if he says anything. He'd be sworn in if you're gonna be testifying anything or not.
On the Westville thing?
Yep.
I mean, I don't have anything to say about it.
Okay.
Sign.
Okay, if you would, raise your right hand and state your name.
I'll say Sherry.
And you swear to tell the truth, whole truth, not the truth?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So many questions on the procedures. Do we have any board members would like to abstain for any reason? No. Um, secretary, was the hearing properly advertised in the paper of record?
Yes.
Need to read it.
We got the date of the ad?
Um, so it wasn't put in the paper, it was, was this one put in the paper?
We need to mark that.
We don't post in the paper anymore, we post online and all of that, and it was done on April four, uh, April thirtieth. We put it online on a Facebook page, uh, because we don't do it in paper anymore after bill three fifteen.
And do you have that handy that you could read it into record?
Public notice. The Harlem Township Board of Zoning Appeals is being asked to consider the following, Westville Estates Mobile Home Park is seeking a variance on the property located at one one zero five zero Fancher Road, Westville, Ohio, four three zero eight two. To propose a new sign for the Westville Estates Mobile Home Park, the existing sign and poles will be removed and the new non-illuminated monument sign reading Westville Estates with the contact information for the mobile home park will be installed. The hearing will be held Monday, May nineteenth, two thousand, two thousand twenty five at seven thirty five PM at the Harlem Township Firehouse, three eight eight three South State Route, six oh five Belina, Ohio, four three zero two one. The hearing is open to the public, the application with the company documents can be viewed online at www dot harlem twp dot com or by appointment. Please contact the zoning office between eight and twelve at seven four zero nine six five two six six one, extension two. If you would like to schedule an appointment, the hearing will also be available on Zoom. Um, sincerely Kyle Ferris, Chairman, Board of Zoning Appeals.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, next time here, um, secretary, was they joining property owners or the joining property notified by first class mail?
They were. But we did not have any return.
And the list was complete, gotta be complete, yep. Um, we did, could they have a point here for a staff report? I think Mike said we didn't have a staff report. And so to the application applicant's presentation. So you're up.
You're up.
Finally.
Okay. Um, so this would be eleven oh five oh Fancher Road, this is the Westville Estates Mobile Home Park, there's an existing post and panel sign there that's currently not illuminated. Um, we're looking to install a new monument sign about thirty five feet from the edge of the road, um, to install it with a foundation and a monument, this will be non-eliminated. Um, it is made out of ACM, PL and and a poster. Um, it will have a white background with needy blue lettering, um, and then a blue base as well. So we're looking to propose this a new sign for this, uh, Westville.
Do we have any comments from adjoining property owners? No. And we can open it up for any public comments. Okay. Maybe have any questions?
Chairman, make a motion to close the hearing to the public and have a discussion amongst the board members.
I'll second that.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we're gonna close the motion to the public and, uh, the board members are gonna discuss.
Guess I could start. Looking at the application and, and the location assigned and materials, uh, it's better what they got, it's a big improvement. I think it meets our regulations and, uh, the only thing I think we don't have is a maintenance agreement with that. Okay, if you have a maintenance, that's, that's make sure, make sure that gets to the zoning inspectors. Yes, okay, I, I don't have my back on it, I didn't, I didn't dig it out. So I think it answers all my questions as far as what, what's going on with this, so.
Uh, we probably don't, uh, what somebody wants. I re- I remember. Yeah. Anyone else?
No questions for me.
No.
Okay, um, we need to take a roll call though on the-
We just make a, close, close the public portion and close our part, I guess, yeah, enough for vote. Yep, go ahead, had the roll call vote.
Done, make a motion and then roll, or do we just roll call vote it?
We just roll call voted, right?
Roll call vote, Kyle Ferris.
Aye.
Steve Eisenbrow.
Aye.
Keith Campbell.
Aye.
Bill Gallagher.
Aye.
Amy Richardson.
Aye.
The eyes have it.
You guys have it? Um, we have a motion to come out of this hearing, we need that.
Close, make a motion, I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
I'll second that.
All favor of the motion to close the hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
I said that, so HT BZA twenty five dash oh two, Westville Estates Mobile Home Park. And the hearing is closed and they're, they're, uh, they're, um, what we're calling that, they're, uh,
You'll get a letter from our secretary in thirty, thirty days after you get the letter, you can see Mike free from it.
Uh, for the building portion?
Mike's shaking, I said no.
I think so.
Sign, I don't know if they-
No.
Sign or not.
No, I don't think so.
And is there still thirty days since you guys are kind of final decision?
Yep.
Okay, I wasn't sure.
There's thirty days for, for appeal.
For any kind of, okay. It's open for thirty days for any appeals from the- Yes, and I will send you, I'll send you a reminder email, but I'll also send you a letter letting you know, um, what date that would be, so you probably get that letter in two weeks. You would, um, come back to Mike and he, would you give her a permit and then I'll give you the permit for the sign?
Okay.
After that thirty days. Those are yours. Do, does anybody want one of them? Keep them in case they end up wanting something else.
Thanks for running a good process.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Seven forty five, seven fifty for this next hearing, should we, can we start already?
No.
No.
It's, it's gonna be advertised, so, uh, wanna do minutes or something or?
Do we have the minutes for the last meeting?
All right, did, did they get emailed?
I emailed them.
I didn't look.
Pretty sure I emailed them, for you guys to just stay along for next time and I'll email them.
We proved minutes removed before.
Table it, cuz I didn't, I didn't.
I haven't seen it, I haven't had a chance.
Wait, my motion to do that.
Yeah, I think so.
I make a motion that we table the approved, reading and the approval of the minutes from, uh, our previous meeting till the June meeting.
I second the motion.
All favor.
Aye.
Nice having it. Wait, we went too quick, we have about five minutes before the advertised prices and that, or advertised time of the next hearing, so we have to kind of wait on that timing. It feels like government efficiency.
Kill some time. The zoning commission is working on the sign regulations.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, uh, I was, like, last month I was zoomed on him for, or watched it afterwards, I guess, that happens back. And they're gonna give Mike a lot more latitude on, on proving like this.
Or he could take care of it, basically.
Yeah, if it beats all the regulations and it's, you know.
They're working really hard to make it where people don't have to come to you guys for signs, because you guys are gonna start getting busy to where signs are gonna be something silly for you. Uh, so they're working on getting the regulations to where it's a cut and dry, this is what you get, a smoothie in, where they just go to Mike instead of bringing it all the way to you guys. He can look at it, make the decision and give them the permit, a sensible on stock, where it's not that you-
Great idea. Save them two months.
They'll save them a couple months, kinda say, is, you know, you guys can kind of doing it when you guys have, you know, you're building it, occasionally, instead of focusing your energy on things.
Let's go.
You guys have time? For the application you submitted?
Okay. What do we say?
Because we have a couple notes that it's-
Okay, time's, uh, seven fifty PM, we have before us, uh, HT BZA twenty five dash oh three Harlem Road, uh, church, um, for hearing, I think we need a motion to go into the hearing.
Most we open hearing HT BZA twenty four oh-
Three.
Second the motion.
All favor? Aye. Guys have it, so we're in this hearing, I'm about to reread these same things again. Procedure hearing, A would be the staff reports, B would be applicant presentation, C would be adjoining property owners, D is the public comments, E is all comments must be relevant to the issue before the board, F, all may, all may be cross-examined on their statements. G, all questions and presenters and cross-examinations will be directed through the chair. Uh, H, all person speaking will stand at the podium. I, all person speaking will state name and address for the record, all person speaking will give testimony will be sworn in. At this time, do we have a, who wish to speak on this matter? Anybody that wanna speak, please stand and swear again. Um, raise your hand, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, not about the truth?
Yeah.
Good, thank you. This time are any questions on the procedures? Would any board members would like to abstain on this issue? Um, now secretary, was this, uh, hearing properly advertised?
Yeah.
And you have it available, you could read into the record?
Public notice, the Harlem Township Board of Zoning Appeals is being asked to consider the following, Harlem Road United Methodist Church is seeking a conditional use permit for the property located at five five two zero Harlem Road, Belina, Ohio, four three zero two one. This conditional use permit is being submitted to permit the addition of a new auxiliary building to the church. Hearing will be held on Monday, May nineteenth, two thousand twenty five at seven fifty PM at Harlem Township Firehouse, three eight eight three South State Route, six oh five Belina, Ohio, four three zero two one. The hearing is open to the public, application is accompanied with documents that can be viewed online at www dot harlem twp dot com or by appointment. Please contact the zoning office between eight and twelve at seven four zero nine six five two six six four, I'm extension three, if you would like to schedule an appointment. The hearing will also be available on Zoom. Sincerely Kyle Ferris, Chairman, Board of Zoning Appeals.
At the time, the application was received by the BZA was a list of adjoining property owners reviewed and found to be complete.
It was.
And were the adjoining property owners notified by first class mail?
They were. You did not have any return.
Okay. So I don't know that we have a staff report here, um, so I think we're ready for the applicant's presentation.
State your name and address.
Joe Klase with Plan for Land, one South Harrison Street in Ashley, Ohio, and I'm here with, uh, Brent Wolf and Pastor, uh, Rocky Riddle as well, uh, on behalf of the church. I, uh, give you kind of an overview, um, we were asked to put together site plans and assist in the permitting process for a new auxiliary building at the church. Um, it actually started, uh, last year, we did a small addition to their, uh, storage facility. Uh, the, it was on a residential property next door, it's being included in this conditional use permit application. Uh, the church is a, uh, existing non-conforming use, uh, within the, uh, the zoning district, so, uh, when we were consulting with them and kind of talking through the process, uh, traditionally a conditional use would have conditions assigned to it, including a site plan. Uh, so as they were looking to expand the church, we, uh, advised them that the conditional use permit was the proper procedure. Uh, so a lot of the, the nature of what was presented to use pre-existing conditions, the church itself, uh, they're looking to use the existing parking lot and add a, uh, roughly a nine thousand square foot auxiliary building, I'm gonna go from my, my mind, so if you have specifics, I can, I can get to it in the application. Uh, there's some renderings of the app, uh, proposed building on pages six and seven in the application. Uh, those, uh, uh, renderings kind of depict, uh, at the backside of their parking lot, uh, in front of their septic system, uh, a, a proposed auxiliary building. The, uh, auxiliary use would be that, that's already going on in the church. Uh, these will be activities that'll be relocated outside of the church and, uh, and into this auxiliary facility. Uh, it's meant to supplement the main church sanctuary, so for the purposes of parking purposes, a lot of those things that were calculated previously with the permitting of the church, uh, it would be, um, sharing parking with the church itself, so we, we didn't, in discussions with them, they didn't feel that they needed any additional parking and it looked like they satisfied the parking requirements of the Harlem Township zoning resolution, so we've not proposed any. Uh, we did have conversations with the, uh, uh, with the, um, county, uh, and, uh, they're comfortable with the existing stormwater basin that's located on site, uh, handling stormwater runoff from the proposed facility. Uh, it's gonna be located directly next to it, uh, additionally, uh, the, um, septic design being consulted with the Delaware, Delaware Public Health District, um, but we'll ensure that the existing system can handle this facility as well, it'll be sharing the same facility, same system, uh, as far as the, uh, septic treatment system. Uh, water will be extended from the road. And I'm assuming that would be with the new tap for the new, new facility. Um, other than that, uh, we've provided, uh, the required information for the conditional use permit, um, they will be completing a survey to combine the parcels, uh, considering the location. Um, but they're asking for some flexibility on that, uh, because the, uh, we'll have to do a lot split for the existing, uh, parsonage, uh, cuz it's my understanding that will have to be separate from the proposed auxiliary structure. Uh, so I gave you an idea of what that configuration would be, I just asked for a little flexibility in laying out that two acre lot, and it's my understanding that that would actually have to go through a AR one to FR one rezoning as well, uh, to try to get it under the five acres. Uh, so we're asking for conditional use on the entirety of the property, um, but eventually the parsonage would be split off and, uh, kept on a separate parcel for tax reasons, is my understanding. It's currently on a separate parcel, but this proposal would, would, uh, actually be on that parsonage parcel if, uh, if you go, go through with it that way. Um, other than that, I didn't have a whole bunch I wanted to present, I, uh, wanna be kind of mindful of your time. Uh, we did provide the application materials, including a floor plan, uh, if you have any questions on it, we're all here to answer any questions you might have, and procedurally, we understand that the conditional use, uh, would, uh, be, um, would lock them in on the development plan, the commitments that are in the application, and, uh, it could be amended, amended only through an action of your board, so we'd be back here if they were proposing any type of change to it, uh, going forward. That's all I had, unless you have questions for me.
Questions?
I'll have a couple.
Okay.
So, the many hours of operation, that'd be much different than the church, I mean, it's not gonna be something happens like twenty-four seven or something like that, it's gonna be, the hour, the hours are gonna be changing, not be changing, right?
Yeah.
Okay, but you guys answered that, you might have to give your name and address for them, but, um, yeah, but I think they, they can sit here and answer, correct?
Yeah, they can, they can, they can state it right there.
Is the button up?
Yep.
It is now.
Good. Yeah, just state your name.
Name, uh, Rocky Riddle, five five four six Harlem Road. Uh, question was if the hours of the buildings are gonna be changing and I, no, we'll, we'll keep the same hours.
The other question I have is, uh, like lighting, is there not gonna be lighting, it's gonna interfere with the neighbors or like that, I mean, the is, it's gonna be the same lighting in the parking lot, you got, existing, it may be like the outside light on the building, I'm sure, but, but for entrance, but
Yeah, we specified-
Any lighting would have to be down, down lighting, so it doesn't, and, and so it doesn't shine into neighboring properties, that's one of the big concerns we get. Uh, if there'll be any landscape changes, I'm not sure.
Yeah, so there, there was some landscape proposed, um, the, the grasses remain the grass except for around the building, but, uh, the landscaping would be consistent with the existing church, there's, uh, landscape bed located between the parking lot and the proposed auxiliary structure behind the sidewalk. Uh, that would be landscaped with shrubs, uh, and we, we did provide a, a little bit of detail on that in the renderings, but, uh, ideally, uh, lighting, uh, it'd be wall pack type lighting, and, uh, it would be downcast and compliant with the Harlem Township zoning code.
See, what else can I think of? Pretty much, you know, we'd be concerned about the noise, lighting, and, and, you know, the hours of operation, that's pretty much what we got, you know.
On noise, this'll allow for an expansion of additional square footage internal, so, um, the hope would be that this would allow for more indoor activity and hopefully less nuisance to, uh, to anybody outside.
I don't know too much, but I got anyone else?
Okay, um, we have comments from many adjoining property owners. Do we have any comments from the public in general? Anything from the zoning inspector? This will be the last call for, to speak for the public. Sure.
You can stand, you can stand your name and address.
I have two addresses, uh, fifty five ninety Harlem Road, right in shorts, my dad's house, and fifty six ten Harlem Road. Um, I guess it's have a, you know, I know that there are zoning restrictions for, um, how close it can be to the property line, and I'm just wondering how close, um, how close would these buildings go to the property line? You know, how much space is gonna be there, and they're like, you know, my dad's house, the part of the house that was built was pretty close, you know, to that property, and I was just wondering if this other building will go all the way to the extent, the next property it could.
In the two of our hands, right? It's that pullout plan there.
So, uh, site, site plan is on page four, uh, it indicates the, uh, the proposed setback, so, um, just to clarify, the setback from the center line of the road would be four hundred and six feet. Uh, the setback to the south property line would be a hundred and seventy feet. Uh, property line to the west is two hundred and thirty-three feet, and I didn't indicate the one to the north just cuz it's on the other side of the church, but, uh, the separation between it and the church is a hundred and forty-eight feet.
It's particularly bad because the property on that building, um, my daughter's property, and she wasn't able to come tonight because of, uh, six children. Okay, thank you.
Ensure that with her if you'd like the packet, um, just something.
That'd be great, yes, uh-huh.
Any other comments or questions? We have a motion to close the hearing.
Make a motion to close the, the hearing of, uh, H T B Z A twenty-five oh three.
I second that. All favor? Okay, as having, and we're going to discuss, hear discussion.
Right motion up now with the right.
Would you do a motion to approve the application? Yeah, I mean, I, I don't have.
Presented is pretty, pretty complete.
I was going to say, this is, it's kind of a typical Joe pack. So, uh, from what I've come to learn to expect.
You know, there's, there's no, there's, well, I know, you know, when you're using the condition issue, you can set the conditions and other conditions is what, what you're, you know, there's nothing right. It's changing other than in fact they're just using the billion.
Yes, it's not changing hours. It's not adding outside.
Not changing the use, not changing the hours, not changing.
Right, it's just more capacity for programs and.
You know, as far as setting conditions, conditions which outlined in the fact, I mean, but, you know, but, but the, what's presented is, but needs to happen, so.
Can we include the package in the record?
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's how far the record, anyway, it goes into the records.
Okay.
Make the motion to approve H, H T B Z A twenty-five oh three Harlem Road Church for conditional use for accessory building to expand their, the capacity to, for, for activities. Uh, as per their packet presented, the location with, with the expectation that the, the same parking, the same, uh, same hours and the same activities that normally go on at, at a church. So that's pretty much what you'd say.
I second that. Okay, we have a second. We have a roll call vote, please.
Yes, Kyle Ferris.
Hi.
Steve Eisenbrow.
Hi.
Keith Campbell.
Hi.
Bill Gallagher. Amy Richardson.
Hi.
Hey, guys, have it. So, um, H T B Z A twenty-five dash oh three Harlem Road Church, their application has been approved.
Same thing applies. She'll send you a letter, thirty days, you can get your permit.
That's cool.
I'll send you a letter. Um, it'll state the day that you would be approved. Um, it's thirty days from today and then you can come in and get your paperwork from me. You're good to go.
Thank you.
Nice job.
Eight o'clock, so we're next, I guess.
Rear roll.
Rear roll, we're six minutes.
Next, next up on.
No, I was just saying you guys are going to go because the other one started at eight, so.
Ready?
Next up would be, uh, H T B Z A twenty-five oh four. Um, schedule start at eight oh five.
Close the last year.
Pardon me?
No.
Oh.
Last year in real fast.
The motion to close, uh, hearing, H T B Z A twenty-five dash oh three.
Make a motion and close it, twenty-five oh three.
My second motion.
All favor say aye. Actually, we have reattached to this one, right?
Pre-hearing, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so H T B Z A dash twenty-five, excuse me, twenty-five dash oh four, it's going to start eight. Followed by H T B Z A twenty-five oh five. It's going to start at eight oh five and H T B Z A twenty-five dash six. It's going to start at the ten. So I think we just take these one at a time. So, uh, motion to go into hearing for H T B Z A twenty-five dash oh four.
Make a motion to open twenty-five oh four.
Second. Second. All favor?
Aye.
All right. Want to read this three more times, I think.
Who's representing them?
Did they come up?
Yeah, wait, we need to move over the procedures or you need to hear them again. Yeah, did y'all hear procedures before?
I heard, I, I don't know.
Okay, let's.
This, this is a hearing procedure that I read twice already for each of those other two, and then I could probably read them three more times for each of these. Guys, need them, okay? I think we got them.
Got it down.
Procedures, going over the procedure.
Basically just what were people going to go in and how we're gonna conduct it. So I think we've covered that. Is there any questions on the procedures?
So all three of these have to be done separately.
Evidently, they're all got separate. We, we can, the first will take the longest, then the other ones might not be so, so long, depends.
It's going to say we're already to the point where we can do the first two essentially, we're only two minutes off, so.
So we have, we have any extensions from the board on these, on these?
That's where people's going to speak, so.
Well, here we go, yep. Uh, any, any, any persons are going to speak on this matter, we need to swear you in. You stand, raise your right hand. Um, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I did.
Thank you. Uh, Madam Secretary, was the hearing properly advertised in the paper of record?
Online, on Facebook page and in all places that we have to. Yes.
Do you have a copy of that? You can read in the record. It's three different.
Yeah, I did them all into one public notice because putting out three seems silly.
Good.
Public notice, the Harlem Township Board of Zoning Appeals is being asked to consider the following. That would say. Leftly. Alright, Gwendolyn C. Leftley is seeking three variances to their property located at eleven, two, two, five, Forest Road, Colina, Ohio, four, three, zero, two, one. The variance requests being submitted are allowing, uh, to have build a detached twenty-four by twenty-four garage, H T's H T B Z A twenty-five dash oh four, a detached or a dedicated driveway, H T B Z A twenty-five oh five and two decks attached to the rear of the existing house. H T B Z A five dash oh six, personal number, um, three, one, six, two, three, two, zero, zero, one, zero, six, nine, zero, zero, zero. Hearing will be held on Monday, May nineteenth, twenty twenty-five at eight P M. For application, H T B Z A twenty-five dash oh four at, uh, what was that, the first one? At eight, second one at eight oh five, and the third one at eight, ten. At Firehouse, company, online, call us, Kyle Ferris, chairman. I read all that three times, so we all heard it, we're good.
So four.
Where we're at, you know where to give it.
So four is, four is which one?
Four is the first one.
Which is?
Garage.
Garage. Driveway and then deck.
That's the order that we decided to do.
Okay.
Some of their stuff and all it together.
Yeah, I agree. At the time the application was received by the B Z A was a list of adjoining property owners reviewed and found to be complete.
Yes.
And the joint property owners were notified by first class mail?
Yes. None or?
I believe we have a staff report here, so I believe we're ready for the applicant's presentation.
Take your name and address to the record.
Matt Kers, twelve thousand Woodtown Road, Colina, Ohio, four, three, zero, two, one. Uh, we're here for the first variance to build a twenty-four by twenty-four detached garage from the existing residence. Um, all setbacks will conform with the, with the zoning, uh, code under the P R D. And that is, that's all I have today.
Any questions?
Uh, what, I just needed like, uh, the size of garage and what materials it's built on. What size is the garage?
Twenty-four by twenty-four.
And what, what's the construction?
Uh, the foundation will be concrete footer, C M U block with, uh, wood frame walls. Exterior cladding will be, um, uh, cement board type material.
Check over front overhead doors, side doors.
Uh, two, two overhead doors, side door, windows, three windows. Something that matches the, the existing residence. And is architecturally pleasing.
Have my. The.
Did you want to see the?
What's the, yeah, what's the, yeah, what's the set fact, so I didn't say.
You want to hear, you want to, so our setbacks are currently eight foot from the east property line. Um, they have seventy-one feet from the west. P R D setbacks are, side yards are less than than any other zoning districts. Uh, give me one second. There is a drawing attached as well. Sixty-eight point eight feet from the rear and then a hundred and twenty-five feet, uh, from the front.
Building back here.
Any questions on this one? Any comments from adjoining property owners? Yep, if you would come to the podium, state your name and your address.
My name's Roger Nye Barker. Uh, I represent the congregation of New Directions Church, the, the one, one, two, two, five of Coursey Road. We have absolutely not one objection to this project. Like to see it go. I just want to be here to support the people, the great neighbors and, uh, done a tremendous amount and I sincerely hope that the board decides it's okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Roger.
Amazing.
Do we have a, uh, that's any other joining property owners? Do we have any comments from the public in general? Any statements from zoning inspector? To be last call for the public to speak?
Uh, make a motion to close the public portion of the hearing.
Have a second?
Second.
So, and all favor say aye.
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 For the public portion of the hearing, H T B Z A twenty-five dash oh four is closed. Okay. Different points?
My question hasn't been answered. I don't know if anyone else has any questions.
Yeah, uh, we went through this in some detail the last time we originally accepted the application. I, I don't have any questions.
Questions?
Question? Um, I think we just take the roll call vote, right?
Yeah, we got, we got to put the.
No, write the motion up.
We got, we gotta put the details in the motions. About eight foot, eight foot side yard setback.
This one's, yeah.
This is a variance, right? Or is this? We call this a variance, yeah. Or conditionally.
No, that was our best of two options.
Does it, did you call it various? You call it conditionally?
It's not conditionally used to be, I don't think it's variants either, but it's a minor modification.
I know, it's a modification to the, to the, uh, what they call that?
To the subdivision?
It's a.
Or technically not subdivision, but.
But the plan, plan, the plan district.
Yeah.
We're approving the mod, we're approving the modification to a plan, a plan district.
Minor modification.
Right, mine.
That was two.
Yeah.
The variance.
Yeah, they, they've checked it off as a variance. I think we'll use the variance word.
Yeah. Yeah, so we're going to approve the variance with a minor modification to the P R D.
The P what?
This is a P R D, correct?
Right, yeah, P R Ds. I'll make a motion to approve the minor modification to the P R D for a detached garage as per the plan submitted.
Let's call the variance, variance of a minor, with minor.
Move a variance?
Yeah.
For a minor by, one, a various for a minor modification. Motion to approve a variance for a minor modification to the P R D for a detached garage per plan submitted. That's my motion.
I second it. Roll call vote, please.
Kyle Ferris.
Aye.
Steve Eisenbrow.
Aye.
Keith Campbell.
Aye.
Bill Gallagher.
Aye.
Amy Richardson.
Aye.
Questions carried? Yeah. Well, H T B Z A twenty-five dash oh four. We need to close that hearing. Oh. I make a motion to close the hearing on H T B Z A twenty-five dash oh four.
A second.
All favor say aye.
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 So, H T B Z A twenty-five dash oh four is passed, as presented. Um, the next one is H T B Z A twenty-five dash oh five. The motion to go into that hearing, right? I move we go into the hearing on H T B Z A twenty-five oh five.
I second.
All favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So hearing is open at eight twenty.
We'll present second one.
And she doesn't have to read her part?
Uh, yeah, I'll say, well, no, it's already been read.
Let me run through it, y'all.
Okay.
We, we, it was. It was all, it was one day, one big ad.
Think we've, uh, we follow the same. We'll follow the same procedures. Are there any questions on the procedures for the hearing?
Um, and extensions.
Extentions from the board.
No.
And you've already been sworn in, so that's covered, um.
Roger sworn into.
We've, we've read the, the, uh, newspaper report or the, uh, ad posting. And it's been written to record in during H T B Z A twenty-five dash oh four. Ah, oh, yes, correct. The time the application was received, the. The time the application received, the, the joining, uh, property owners reviewed and found to be complete.
Yes, and then a return.
Then returned. And, uh, we all have first class man. Okay, the staff report now we're ready for that. Sorry.
Yeah, all right. With this, uh, with this variance, uh, minor modification with variance, we're asking for approval to put in a dedicated driveway uh, from Gorsuch Road to the existing residence located at one one two two five Gorsuch Road. Uh, the new driveway from the road to the new garage, uh, that was previously approved will be concrete. Other than that, we're, uh, we're just seeking this variance just so the current property owner, owner Gwendolyn has, uh, her own access to the property from Gorsuch Road. And this would all go through approval with, uh, the, uh, the, the streets department with the township prior to install. Looking at drainage and and everything else for approval.
Okay, any questions? Any questions from adjoining property owners? Comments? Any comments from the public? From the zoning inspector? Okay.
Make motion to close the public portion.
I second.
All favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Get the discussion of us, uh, driveway.
I'm fine with it.
Again, because, because it was a, a, a planned subdi- subdivision and any minor modifications has to come to us according to the from township zoning resolution, but we're here. You say it's gonna be concrete? That's it. Uh, you said met all the requirements from the load maintenance to people, so. I have no other question for this all.
Okay, I can make that motion just the same as the other one, but just.
I'm looking at that. A motion to approve the minor modifications to the PRD for a new driveway.
Very, very.
Motion to approve a variance. For, for by modifications to PRD for a new driveway person planned submitted. Oh my God.
I second.
Okay, roll call vote?
Hi, Berks.
Aye.
Steve Eisenbrow.
Aye.
Kate Campbell.
Aye.
Bill Gallagher.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion has passed.
I make a motion that we close this hearing for HTBZA twenty-five dash oh five.
A second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Same thing, thirty days you'll get your.
No, HTBZA twenty-five dash oh five has passed and the time is eight twenty-five. And, uh, we're gonna be moving toward hearing HTBZA twenty-five dash oh six. Have a motion to, uh, we know here.
I make a motion to open the hearing on HTBZA twenty-five dash oh six.
I second.
All favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Times eight twenty-five. Um, okay, let me run through these one more time, just make sure every procedures. So, uh, we've covered these procedures a few times. Any questions on procedures? Hopefully there are. Um, any extensions from the board? Um, you've been sworn in again. Um, I'm secretary, do we have the ad properly advertised?
Yeah.
Can you read it, please?
Oh, this is included in.
Oh, you already got it. Yeah, you've read it already. That's great. It was read in, uh, so the advertisement was written in HTBZA twenty-five dash oh four.
It was mailed out. Joining property owners and there were none returned.
I believe we have staff reports, so our applicant.
All right, uh, on this application, we're looking for a variance for a minor modification to one one two two five Gorsuch Road to add. Um, it's, it's one deck, but two different sections that kind of wrap a corner. One section is eight by fourteen, the other one is six by six. Um, those will exit onto the new concrete driveway that was approved. And that is all I have at this time.
Okay.
And the deck will be composed of wood with, with, with mop, with, uh, foundations.
And concrete pillars or?
Do what?
Young concrete pillars, the.
Uh, be treated posts in the ground on, uh, on concrete.
What comment?
So do we have any of your comments from adjoining property owners? Do we have any comments from the public?
Make motion to close the public portion of the hearing.
Back up.
All favor say aye?
Aye.
No, I'm fine with it.
My question was answered, so I don't know anything else, but anything else.
So can you read that one again for the third time? We've changed the order.
I say we make a motion to approve variance. The minor modifications to the plant planned residential development for two decks on the back of the house for the plans submitted.
I second it.
The second will come.
Roll call vote?
Berks.
Aye.
Steve Eisenbrow.
Aye.
Kate Campbell.
Aye.
Bill Gallagher.
Aye.
Amy Richardson.
Aye.
Motion's carried. Times eight twenty-eight. We have a motion to, uh, exit HTBZA twenty-five oh six.
Make a motion, we turn the, the hearing.
Second.
All favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Good.
The HTBZ twenty-five dash oh six was, uh, passed at, and the, uh, hearings closed at eight twenty-eight.
Hmm, okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, good deal. Sorry, it's such a process, but it sounds like it's gonna be a nice addition.
Yep.
Yeah. Okay. We're back to new business, it looks like. No wonder, uh, we're back to a regular meeting here. We're going to look for new business. Do we have any new applications for today?
That's.
You're up again.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So I, I have a unique application. It's administrative appeal. Um, there's a I, I can.
Say your name and all that again.
Joe Place, Plan for Land, one South Harrison Street, uh, representing the NEFs. Um, we, uh, we have an application to ask for consideration of a non-conforming use. Uh, this would be a precursor potentially for a variance application, but it's not a variance in itself. We're just trying to ask, we have standing to, uh, submit for a variance. Um, the codes, uh, indicated we had to present it to the zoning inspector, so we presented to the zoning inspector. Um, I'm just here, uh, maybe procedurally to add, answer any questions you might have. Uh, it is a little bit of a unique hearing, uh, versus a variance or conditional use, so, um, I, I think they'll probably have a legal representative here for the application itself and the hearing. Uh, I just, we're representing them to make sure it gets processed.
Okay.
Uh, it's for determination of a proper, there's a few points in there, um, and I won't, obviously I have time to read it, but, um, it was a fun ride. Um, but, uh, the question is, there's a cease and desist on the property for commercial activity. Uh, they believe they have some legal rights to use the property as a non-conforming use, uh, so they're asking for a hearing to, uh, to determine whether or not it would be, uh, um, whether or not the nature of that is there is, uh, valid. So, uh, we, we asked for a subpoena of, uh, the neighbor that sold them the property. Uh, also the, um, um, current and prior zoning inspector. Uh, we asked for public records request in conjunction with I, the code states that they would deliver all materials, but, um, this would be included in the, in the application as well. So there's a few components to it. If you have any questions, I'm, I definitely love to answer them, but, uh, it's a, it's a unique one. We only do, uh, maybe been in business for eleven years and only filed maybe a half dozen appeals. So, um, if, uh, yeah, and if you have any questions, I'm here to answer those.
Of course. Actually, I have, so.
Yeah.
I don't too. Somewhat familiar with the problem.
Sure.
Joe. I was with Mike when the first complaints came in. Even that we said. Why aren't you taking this to zoning? Why aren't you asking for zoning on their property?
So, property owner believes they have a legal right to use the property as a non-conforming use uh, based on, uh, the, the pre pre-hearing interview that we had with the seller, uh, and also, uh, the, in the the information that we were presented by the seller, uh, and uh, yeah, it, I guess it, some of that's gonna have to come out in a hearing, but, um.
Well, yeah, but that's where is there written, uh, information coming to it?
You, uh, we tried to cite some credible sources in there, like the auditor's office. Uh, we tried to, um, provide some, I think there's subpoena records to the business records and things like that that could be provided.
Or, or any change in the zoning?
Yes.
So wouldn't that be a problem between the buyer and the seller, not, and not a problem? The seller's saying that he has a right to do this based on what the seller told him.
So the questions you're asking are what they're asking for a fair and impartial hearing on, and that's why I'm saying maybe we don't want to talk about those tonight, but ask for that to be addressed.
So if you're in my place.
Sure. Yeah, the administrative appeals on the, on the nature of the cease and desist. Um, there were a few comments that were made, uh, specifically that, uh, non-conforming use wouldn't transfer with the property, uh, as a change in ownership. We cited court cases in there that it would. Uh, there's a discussion, uh, as well as, um, the nature of commercial activity, uh, can be limited through a proper hearing with the BZA. We're just asking for an opportunity for that proper hearing. Uh, so there's a case of, uh, Martindale versus, uh, Genoa Township, uh, that might be used and it is cited in the application. Um, but that, that might be a pretty pertinent one, uh, to the application. I think there's a Hall versus Genoa Township. I, I know of a few local ones that are very similar and, uh,
The hearing has to determine if you can have a hearing.
Correct. The hearing would be to decide the, uh, the nature of, uh, those four issues that are highlighted in the application.
Issuing the variance.
Correct.
They would just be having a hearing on whether they can issue the.
Correct.
That makes sense. I, so I don't know, I read, this, I mean, I'll tell you how new this is.
Sure.
Last time I remember the BZA having an appeal like this was before I got on the board thirty years ago.
Yeah, they don't, they don't come by very often.
Or I don't remember what, what paperwork we did. That's fine.
It's only thirty years ago.
But we had. But I, I don't know if we need to join, notify the joint property owners of this hearing or not.
Yeah, the way the code reads, it's parties of interest. Um, I did get a list from Mike and I, I understand that list should be hit. Um, we provided our own, uh, list of parties of interest as well. Uh, it's not about the joining owners as much as those that have a stake in the, in the conversation. So it could be adjoining owners. You, you, you could argue that you want to provide that beyond just the joiners. Uh, the complainants for this were, were well beyond the limits. And I'm not asking for the use to be approved. That's not the nature of this appeal.
You're, you're appealing the zoning, zoning inspector's decision.
Yeah, we're, we're just asking for.
That's good, BZA, I understand that.
And I'm not pointing a finger at Mike. There was, there was a prior zoning inspector was here as well tonight and we're asking him to be subpoenaed because uh, I believe this should have happened originally. I, I believe that you should have done a, a mo- a modification of a non-conforming use instead of pursue a zoning. Uh, it's not compliance with the comprehensive plan. Um, I don't think that this, yeah, I, I don't want to get into testimony tonight, but, um, I, I don't believe that the, uh, the nature of, uh, this property is better suited as commercial. And if we can address that with you, this board, I feel like you're, you're the best board to address it with. Um, but if we get thrown out on standing saying that it's not a non-conforming use, then it's not worth submitting you a packet and taking the time to put that together, so.
I, I really would like to consult my legal representative before I commit to anything.
Yep. Yeah, and I, I'm, I'm here just to answer any questions you have about the submittal, um, in, in its nature. Um, but again, I don't want to get to trying it tonight. I think that's what we need to do, uh, when, when the proper time comes.
Weeks and actually talk to the legal representative, I guess.
Are you lucky to set a date for this?
Uh, if you do, um, that's what I need to be prepared for, um, because I feel like there's probably a lot of, uh, stuff that needs to happen before then.
Right. How much time do you think would you would need to?
Uh, you're, you're suitable, like normal month turnaround's fine. Um, I, I think the idea of subpoenas and some of the stuff that comes with an administrative appeal, you, you're probably gonna need that thirty days. That's the nature of why I stuck around was I wanted to make sure that that didn't go overlooked.
Nice, but I don't know. It's not our official document.
Yeah, correct.
And I don't know what we've ever, you don't have a document that we actually.
Yeah.
I've ever used, so.
We're happy to fill one out. We're happy to give you anything that we need to do in that regard. I just.
Check with my legal representative, see what documentation we need to submit, so.
Yeah, there's not a lot to the code. Um, that section, we've referenced it in there, but there's not a lot to the code that says what needs to be submitted, um, and I didn't want to confuse it by submitting a variance application because that's, that's not what's being asked. We're, we're just asking for a consideration. And, and again, the complainants, uh, that were listed in there, uh, you, you might hear from them at the hearing. We're not asking that you approve what might generate complaints. I just feel like the proper procedure for a, a change in land use was uh, to ask for a substitution of a non-conforming use instead of a rezoning, and that's what's been going on for the last maybe, uh, quite a while. So, uh, I think we just want to step back, uh, do this first, make sure that everybody understands, uh, what the rights of the property are. And it, they'll have a chance to contest it if they don't agree with what you have, and that's, I tried to indicate that in there too, but um, there's a pretty big track record of non-conforming uses being tested this way instead of through the zoning process.
You don't want any more of a conversation here and then, uh, let's make a decision.
Yeah, I try to keep it as formal as possible, um, just because I know that there's some people that are up in arms about the issue, um, but yes, if we can, we would like to understand the issue better and understand why there's concern that it's not a non-conforming use. Um, but we, we've provided as much evidence that we can in the pre-application, um, we'll be collecting additional before the hearing as well. Hopefully photos and other things that we can present.
Obviously, you know, it's been thirty years or whatever, and from me looking through every document on our computers, um, I don't know that there is anything for submission of an administrative appeal to where we have paperwork for that more or less just. Wouldn't it just be setting a hearing and that hearing happening? I don't think we necessarily, they're not submitting an application for anything. They're just wanting a.
Well, I, I, I still like talk, I like talk to, or legal representatives to make sure we do.
So I imagine with, uh.
Should we do everything right?
Yes. But do we want to set a hearing at least so that it's not another couple of months out because those residents are suffering?
Comment. Um, we can go ahead and set the hearing at our next meeting. And then when, uh, everybody talks to the council and he's talking to his council, if it's not going to happen, then we can make comments and then extend it. You don't have, in other words, we can change it.
Yes.
At least you have something.
That's kind of what I want. I don't want it to go out. Okay, well, let's wait to talk to Leo.
Go ahead and set the dates and then if you need to extend it to.
Cause our residents are waiting for this at this point.
True, true, because anytime we start hearing, we can always recess to time certain, time concerns.
Now, if you find out you don't have something or whatever, yeah, it, it could be continued. But rather, I, I'm with Joe, this has dragged on so long.
Too long.
Yeah, that, let's just, my recommendation is set, set next hearing, the next meeting. A hearing for that or a meeting, and then if we need more time, we can extend.
Yes, so. Is he, has he ceased and desist?
Uh, they're asking for it to stay on the enforcement of the cease and desist as a part of this action. Yeah, so that's part of the, uh, there is a legal precedent for a stay, um. You can file it in court, but I, I mean, that would take the authority away from the BZA, so. I would, I, I can answer enough questions about process. It is, it is a very confrontational process. Now, one that, um, I, I think it's better settled here at the township level than anywhere else, and I understand that's where it was kind of headed, was toward court. I'd like to see the issue resolved here. If you guys can resolve it, I was a part of Martindale versus Genoa Township, and I can tell you it got remanded back to the township and resolved at the local level. That doesn't always happen. Um, it, it's, uh, sometimes a judge decides the land use and you guys lose control. So my ask is that we just have an opportunity for that hearing.
Too, because, because the judge, it might take a year.
My, yes, true.
Problem.
Yep.
Get on the court docket, so.
Yeah, that, that's why I, I'm kind of.
Stay.
That's what I said. I, I don't.
What's happened, I know in my, I'm not trying to speak for Mike. But I know I've been involved with conversations with the attorney. Yeah, the cease and desist is, I.
If, I, we can't, I can't do anything about that. I'm not legally, I'm not legally bound, bound.
I, I. I, I think the statute would say that if it's pending, it, it is a stay of enforcement, but.
But there's nothing pending now.
I, submitting it, just asking for a hearing, so if.
But no, this is just, uh, this is not a hearing to approve anything. It's a hearing discussion. And to see if it can move forward, but it's not, I don't.
You may, you may consult legal counsel about that.
It's, it's.
That's what we're talking about is maybe just turn it over and let it go to court.
But who's, let me ask you this, has he, has he, and I drive by there every day. Has he altered his, or is he still just doing whatever he wants there?
I don't know. But I, I can tell you that I don't think legally that he has to cease and desist. That's all I'm saying. I'm not a lawyer. We can take that up at the hearing.
Yeah.
I, I'm just saying that I, I believe that the.
So I just, so just to make it clear, he considers to have no consideration for the neighbors.
And that's not what I'm saying. So what I'm saying is I think this is the best way to hear the, uh, nature of what's permitted. I, I think to tell somebody they can't use their property for commercial use when there's a history of industrial use is what, what we're being asked. Again, I don't want to get into testimony, so it's, it's.
The man has been out there for two years doing this. They put us off for two years.
The fair and impartial might be an issue. I understand that. If it is an issue, I, I think that's going to come out in the hearing as well, but all I'm saying is I understand that there's a.
I think he should go to court and get a stay, get the stay in court.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's where these, I mean, we, we can't, we, we, we.
You can't go to court against the township, that he can't file a court case and gets the township until this hearing's been completed. He'll have 30 days after that to file it in court.
So let me read right here. So what you're asking for is a, a hearing on the judgment of the zoning inspector. And the timing would probably be our next month, which would, looks to be June 16th, Monday, June 16th. Our, our lack of having a lot of foundations for having done this in the past, um, I don't know what the rest of the word thing, I would, I would lean toward following similar procedures and what we do for our other, other things or various conditional use. So we may fall back on some of that. So if we do, there may be timing for mailings and such things. If we have to do any of that kind of stuff, we'll have to look at that and see.
Sure.
The proper procedures.
Yeah, let me know. If, if you want to join ours, we can get those. I just didn't want to go short of who should be notified. And like I said, we, we listed our parties of interest.
I think we do this. Read this to the property, so.
Sure.
So with, without something else, we might fall back on that. So if you're familiar with that.
Yep, yep. Just let me know. Yeah, like I said, we're, we're not trying to be stubborn about it. I just understand this is the nature of what has to happen before we can do other things. So, um, whether we could seek a variance if the, and come back before you in another nature, not say you have to approve that variance if this appeal is approved. Um, the other option would be for them to submit for a rezoning if the appeal was denied. Um, but there, there is some basis for both of those. And all I'm saying is we're, I'm hired to provide a site plan. I'm going to provide that site plan. I just told them I don't know the proper format to seek it unless we get this decided first. And we, we did meet with Mike, uh, trying to talk through that issue, but I understand the township's opinion and we, we're just contesting that. That's all.
So I think we could probably set this, the, the hearing to, uh, see this appeal in our next monthly meeting, our regular scheduled meeting. I imagine, um, so we might find at that time that all we have to do other things, we may have to.
Sure.
To, uh, you know, push it back or see what the timing works and, and all good stuff. So I, does anybody else have any? That sound.
Not at this time.
Thank you.
I don't know, until I talk, talk to legal, I don't know anything.
Yeah. So we may want to put this at, back into that next meeting.
Sure.
Since it might be a little bit longer.
It, and I will say I've done about a half dozen of these. We just had one earlier this year. It's best when they take a couple of nights, so. I, I'm, I'm not saying, I just make sure that you've adequately considered it because once you do make a decision, it's, that's decision moves in a whole different way. So, um, yeah, and I'm not trying to skew how you vote. I'm just saying, it's, uh, to me, I, I spent a long time as a zoning inspector and these, um, there's a reason why the appeal process happens. So, um, that's all. Thank you. I appreciate it.
We'll probably set that toward the end of that next, that meeting next month. I'm not sure if we'll, we need to have a set time or if we have to advertise or anything like that. I'm not sure.
Set a time and you can always start late. You just can't start early. So if you want to set the hearing for 10 minutes after our meeting starts and we don't start it for 30 minutes, that's fine.
Yep.
So you can essentially just set the hearing time. I would put it just because I don't know that you guys have a ton at your next meeting. I would set it closer to the beginning of the meeting so that you're not sitting around waiting for it to start. Because you can always start it late.
If, if you need us to serve our own, um, witnesses in it, uh, let us know. We can do that as well. Um, I just figured I, if you guys knew two of them already, I was listing them. Um, but if we need to serve the adjoining owner too, let us know. We happy to help in any way.
I don't know. But I do some research, find out how, what happened in the past.
Sure.
I mean, we would definitely be posting as township and would get posted public notice that we're having a hearing and why we're having a hearing and things like that. That would go out to here adjoining properties that's 200 feet, I think would be, I mean, that's what everything else is. It's a hearing like any other hearing.
Yeah, I think.
When it comes to that kind of stuff.
Yeah, I think it's, you know, on your end or who, who is ever in, if, if we follow a different process than we do for other things, we, they have a justification for that. So I don't know that we do unless we find something. So like I say, we'll probably fall back in that same process we do for, for like a variance.
True.
And that way, every, you know, then all these guys snuck it in.
Yep.
Something like that, so.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
So you can get me a joining property, just 200 feet from the property or the, the joining.
Do that.
200 feet.
Sure. Sure, I'll get that to you. Yep. I'll throw them on, uh, label format, says easiest. Okay, yep, I'll get that to you.
That way, when we're ready to send things out, I already have that ready to go. Not that I'll necessarily do that right away. We're going to have a discussion about that. We'll probably need about it. But that way I have that ready to go.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Sorry. So, the application for administrative appeal, so. So the next meeting, is it in a, is it actually a quote, a hearing? Or is it a discussion?
Should, should be a hearing as far as I understand it. And they, they might recommend a different format for the hearing, especially with the cross, cross-examination. Yeah.
We're gonna need to, to find out. So either at the end of that meeting or a subsequent meeting, if it carried over, given that it's a hearing process, the expectation is there would be a vote as to, uh, whether to allow an application for a variance for that property.
So there's four items in there. I know you had a chance to read, um, but there are four questions that we've posed for arguments and I would, you, I if I'm here, I'll, I'll be making them, uh, a request that you vote on those four items independently. Cause any of those four could trigger a different response from us. If they, if you approve all four, there's really no nature for a variance. It's that the use itself was compliant with the non-conforming use.
Yeah, from the quick read I had, any one of those would basically block it.
Yeah, yeah, and right, correct. Yeah, so the nature of those four is very important to the argument and you could argue that.
We voted, so let's just say we found one that we voted against. What, I'm just trying to understand what's, what the process looks like after that.
So there's still the opportunity for a, a variance. If you, if you determine first and foremost, there was a legal non-conforming use of the property.
Yeah.
Um, there'd be grounds for a variance.
That would be where you might come back to us for a variance.
Yep.
Or you could go back to zoning. For a rezoning.
Good, it could be used as a bargaining chip with the zoning commission to say that there is a prior non-conforming use. I think right now the message is that there is not. So if, if that, that could be a basis for a rezoning application as well.
Oh, yeah, I don't need, okay, I'm just trying to.
Yeah.
My understanding is they, we have a determination from the zoning inspector that the property owner received. They appeal that decision to the BZA. Then the next step would be that would go to a court case.
Yeah, that's.
For what I feel, right?
That's what I'm thinking, yeah.
I think that's the process. I'm not.
The question is how long this is. So, when he was notified two years ago. So you're allowed to just spread this out over two years and now come in?
I, I just got introduced to it within the last few days, a few weeks. Um, yeah, he, he, so you, you'll hear testimony that he didn't, he wasn't told that he had the right to appeal, uh, the violation notice when he first received it. And if you. Yeah, right. But if you look at litigation, I, I think the, the onus is on, I was always, well, there are certain things that you have to do and so if, if the argument is that. No, but that's why I'm, I am here for that reason. So, yeah.
It's, it was our understanding that he's not in compliance and if he doesn't cease and desist, then they, then take action, they will take action.
Yeah, I understood their opinion on it. Um, and I, I think I would ask with an appeal, administrative appeal if they have the same opinion, but, um, we, we probably won't make contact with them unless they, uh, they decide they want to ask us something.
We'll have to talk with the county, but. Okay.
Yep.
So you're saying, he's saying he was not given, or what'd you say, the right to, he didn't know he had the right to appeal the violation?
The, uh, cease and desist, correct?
Oh, you mean this last cease and desist violation?
But, but that's what we informed about. Yeah, the right to appeal it. Yeah, the determination violation. Yeah, yeah, and happy to run through that. I, it, it's, it, I, there's, so the, the idea of the nature of why the hearing might drag on is there's a lot of topics there. Um, but on that, um, we'd ask that the board help facilitate a fair and unby, I forget, fair and impartial, I think that's what the law says. Fair and impartial hearing so that we can put it to bed locally so we don't, don't have to fight the, uh, fight it on a different level. He, he might feel comfortable with your result, even if you deny the appeal. We're just asking for a chance to have that heard before, um, anything else. So, thank you.
Yeah, I, I think what we're doing tonight is, is setting that for next month.
Okay.
And, uh, come next month, we might come in and say, hey, we got to do something completely different.
Understood. Yeah, and feel free to reach out. I, I understand I can't have direct dialogue with the board on this matter in between the hearings, so, um, I may listen for, uh, for Ash. You, you guys have anything that you need from me, just let me know. Um, but, uh, I understand I, I kind of sequestered, I guess, until the hearing. So, uh, as a, as a witness myself, so thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for, thanks for an entertaining evening.
Always. Thanks, guys.
Okay.
Well, I hate being on the record, but I'm going to be on the record anyways. I can't be off the record. My experience with this is personal. Forty years ago, my father was cited by the zoning inspector for having illegal business. And we didn't get to the cease and desist part. We, we appealed it right directly to the BZA. Uh, this is before I was on the BZA. See, that was a long time ago. And, um, we, we did hire an attorney, so we did have attorney represent us. Uh, we had a hearing with the BZA, presented our case. Uh, one of our witnesses is, I don't know, trustee, but I worked on his car. We kind of had earned better advantage probably. But we won our case basically when they, they said it, you know, and it was a legitimate business before, we bought it and, and it was continued business. And if you look in, in, in the regulation, if it doesn't exist for two years, then it, then, then it goes away. Non-conforming use, it's done. Done for, so I don't, the, the, your, your brand ever quit for two years on that profit, piece of property or?
Did what?
They ever quit working on that piece of property or having the business there?
According to what Joe's trying to say, he's saying that they, that, uh, Garrett Brand said he used that building up to the time he sold it to them.
That says in this document.
It's gonna be a he said, she said.
Now, but the big question is on this, if you're.
But what, but, but what was the business? I mean, you know.
Yes. Is he gonna try to say?
Hold on, let's, let's, let's not get into details.
I, I.
In this format.
And maybe you guys get with Mike and talk to Corey. Then also we need an attorney in the hearing.
Yeah, well, Corey was our attorney.
We need our attorney.
So we need, we said appointment.
Yeah, we need a.
At least, Mike and I and Kyle, at least need to sit, sit with, maybe Jim too. I don't, that's up to Corey, how many people you're gonna talk to, but, uh, you know, and.
But no, I think you guys need, because we're getting here for information from the county on, on the process. So I think you guys need to get your ducks in a row on how you're gonna handle it.
The problem is, I don't remember, I was, asked Mike if he could find files from my father's case, but what paperwork would be filled out? I don't remember. Again, because that, my dad and the attorney handled that and I didn't. I was just bystander. But, you know, but that, I know for a fact, but they say it didn't get that far along where, where, you know, the, the, you know, when he came and, and, and accused us, we, we went right, right to the BZA and presented our case. So. So I done, that's the only case.
Interesting anyway, right?
That's the only case I know of.
Well, procedurally, that's what we want folks on the night. So let's, uh, but let's, let's have a motion to set the hearing for next month. And.
Yeah, just.
Reserve a hearing. Nature. So probably looking at June 16th is the, we're gonna be our meeting time, I believe. And eight fifteen, sounds like a good time to set that.
Well, we, is that, what else do we have coming for that meeting?
We don't have anything else.
Well, why would we go that late then?
Okay. Oh, sorry. I had my head, we were starting to.
Yeah, seven forty-five.
See, that's why we have.
That's seven thirty-five.
Is that June 18th? No, that's the, uh, no, June 18th is a Thursday. Yes.
But, yeah, I don't know. I think.
What time do we want to do?
See, I, I don't, it.
Seven thirty-five.
Application form.
We have a motion for seven thirty-five?
I make the motion that we have the meeting on June 16th and seven thirty-five for the hearing.
The application, we have a second.
Five oh seven, B's.
Well, it's, is that?
Right?
Not an application.
It's not official application.
Just a hearing, okay, so we don't have a number, okay.
Of just date time.
Okay, there we go.
It's an appeal.
And who seconded?
I will second.
Have a roll call.
Oh, oh, roll call. Okay, we do roll call.
Oh, okay. Uh, Pat Ferris.
Hi.
Steve Beison Brown.
Yeah.
Keith Campbell.
Hi.
Bill Gallagher. Amy Richardson.
Hi.
Bush carried to have the, uh, the appeals hearing on June 16th at seven thirty-five. All right, well, that's new business. Maybe also, man, our new business, there's no more people left to do, give applications. Um, don't believe we have any reports for the day. We said our meeting time for, uh, next month is.
Seven thirty.
Seven thirty on that, uh, whatever day that we said it was.
June 16th?
June 16th, thank you. Um, we've tabled the, uh, the minutes till next month, so I think we're open to adjournment.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
I second.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We adjourned at fifty-nine. Beat it.
What's the person doing? Or do we just wait to, oh?